Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, first up, presentation to Nancy Bowder, Mayor 2021. Okay, City of Leavenworth, Kansas, Nancy D. Bowder, Mayor, December 8th, 2020 to December 14th, 2021, presented by the Leavenworth City Commission.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind, I have just a few words here, not too long. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your mayor. This is to the citizens of Leavenworth and it's been my joy to to serve over the commission the last six years. This is my seventh year and my second time completing my term as mayor. Something is interesting, we have Madam Mayor here and I've been called Madam Mayor. I always wondered about that because I don't think there's a Mr. Mayor. I don't think we ever call anybody Mr. Mayor. It's always Mayor so-and-so, but I kind of like that term, Madam Mayor. It sounds kind of respectful, kind of nice. I just wanted to say, we have a really great form of government. Our government is the same layout as like 23 other cities, at least 23 other cities in Kansas. I remember many, many years ago when this form of government was adopted, there had been a lot of corruption going on and then Mayor Wilson, no relation to Jermaine, proposed the current form of government. Now we don't represent a little slice of the city. Each of us represents the entire city, which I think is a good thing. We are a team. We're all working for the betterment of the city and for you, the citizens. The mayor has no more power than any of the commissioners. We're all, we all have the same vote and the mayor's vote does not carry any more weight than any of the commissioners and I think that's an important fact about our government too. It has been my honor to work along our stellar commissions over the last few years. I still have two more years, so I'm not leaving yet. Looking forward to working with this stellar commission as well and the outstanding leadership of our city manager and all the wonderful dedicated staff of the city. And of course, I'm looking forward to working with our new Madam Mayor. Thank you Mayor Kamala for backing me up last year during my health difficulties and especially to my husband Greg for driving me to these meetings and several events throughout the year. Appreciate it. I am so proud to represent the city and the citizens of Leavenworth. We will all work together to ensure that Leavenworth continues to be a great place to live, work, and grow a family. I want to thank you for this honor again.
And did I have any questions or concerns over the minutes from any of any commissioners?
Madam Mayor, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Well, okay, I do have one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. I just, I asked you, Guster. There is a misspelling of my name, of course, I always see that, on the first page. So, and Carrie's aware of it, so.
Yes, we'll get that changed.
Okay, so then I guess I would just need a motion, a motion with the amendment to correct that.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed, approved. Okay, new business, public comment. Items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Fill out the sheet with requested information when you enter the meeting. Did we have any public comment? No? Okay. Okay, next up is general items, mayor's appointments. Let me get to that page. Okay, I move to reappoint to the airport advisory board Keith Baker, John Carroll, and William Kitter to terms ending December 31st, 2024, and appoint Billy Summers as the Fort Leavenworth representative. And just a little point of information, Billy Summers, he's the new airfield manager of the Sherman Army Airfield, the military side. Reappoint to the dear management advisory committee Dan Nicodemus, Tom Wells, and Lloyd Yance to a term ending December 31st, 2024, and appoint Whitney Harmon to a term ending December 31st, 2024. Reappoint to the Parks and Community Activities Board Shelley Cannon and Kara McDaniel to terms ending January 15th, 2025. Reappoint to the Sister City Advisory Board Kelly Butler, Whitney Malden, and Lisa Murphy to a term ending December 31st, 2024, and appoint Georgia Moore to a term ending December 31st, 2024. And just a point of information on Georgia Moore, she worked on Fort Leavenworth with the veterans and many years, general manager for multiple hotels, hotels in the hospitality industry. So I moved to approve this, so I just need a second.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, okay, motion passed. Okay, update to unsafe or for unsafe structure, 2201 Magnolia Drive, given 90 days at the October 12th, 2021 meeting.
Item will be handled by Halbert at the city's chief of the.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm here to give you an update of 2201 Magnolia Drive, but before I do, I want to give a brief recap of this process for the new commissioners. Whenever a dam, a structure is damaged by a fire and the fire damage exceeds 75% of the insured value by the ordinance, the city receives a check for 15% of the settlement. The city holds on to that check and we can use it to either demo the structure if the owner doesn't demo the structure, or we hold on to it until repairs are made. And repairs, in the past, the commission has always worked with the concept of we don't firm the check until the project is completed, but we, we hold on to it until the exterior repairs are completed and the interior is ready for wall finishes like sheet rock and stuff. As far as 2201 Magnolia Drive, we have reached that point. The exterior repairs are completed. My department has signed off on all refin inspections for the interior and I believe the interior, they've already started sheet rotting. So staff recommends we go ahead and release these funds back to the owner so that they can have these funds available to finish up the project.
Yeah, Mr. Verdet, yeah, I drove by, yeah. I mean, the outside looks great. So what on the, what was the damage on the inside? Was it just a one area in the house?
They basically gutted the entire house. They removed all, almost all the sheet rock. The garage was not removed and a little bit in the basement, but.
Okay. Did any of my fellow commissioners have any questions?
No.
Anybody? Okay, I just need a motion. Anyone?
I move that the city commission has determined that the structures on 2201, I'm sorry. I move that we approve the, the release of the funds to the owner of 2201 Magnolia Drive.
Second. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Verdet.
Thanks, Hal.
Okay, next up is review unsafe and dangerous structures, 767 Charles Street, given 60-day extension at the November 9th, 2021 meeting.
Speaker Julie Hurley, the director of planning and community development.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor and commissioners. As you said, this is a review of the property located at 767 Charles, which was first reviewed for a potential demolition by the commission on September 14th. At that meeting, it was given an extension until November 9th to make repairs. And at that meeting, it was given, it was reviewed and given an extension until tonight. So since November 9th, the property has changed ownership and Kevin List has purchased the property. In talking with Mr. List, he is intending to repair the property. One thing that he needs to get done before completing those repairs, we've got it up on the screen here, the property has sort of this weird leftover right-of-way, city right-of-way that hooks in behind it. So that is functionally part of the yard, part of this, the existing detached garage back here sits on that right-of-way. I'm not really sure how that right-of-way ended up like it is. Staff isn't 100% sure how that ended up. It's just one of those kind of funny things that we have in some parts of town. So Mr. List is actively working with a surveyor in town. Staff has spoken with that surveyor to complete a survey that's required to request that that right-of-way be vacated. Mr. List is here, he can talk a little bit about his plans and when he expects to have that application to the commission. That is something that the commission would review. And so in talking with Mr. List, his intention is should that vacation request be granted, that he can complete the repairs that are needed to be done to this property. So I will let Mr. List kind of talk about his, his plans for where he's at and then I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, just state your name and address.
My name is Kevin List. I live 716 South 711 West Kansas. We've already proceeded, we put a roof on the house already, we ordered some windows because we're going to relocate some. So as soon as those windows get installed, we'll move on with siding and whatever because I don't think this boundary thing is going to be any holdup.
Is that paperwork in for the right-of-way?
It has not been submitted yet.
They're working on it?
Well, the surveyor, the surveyor has to do it.
Surveyor, Mr. Haring is, yeah.
Yeah, he's been hired, so he said when he can get to it, he will.
Yeah, Mr. List, List, so the owner before you had intentions to just, you know, self-demo from my understanding, and then he sold it to you.
Yeah.
And you want to intend to fix it up, is, you know, is that for a rental property?
We'll probably sell it. It'll probably be, you know, salt.
Okay, okay.
But like I said, this, you know, he, I guess the previous owner, I guess he wasn't really active or did not really want to spend any money on it.
Right.
Like I said, we got a roof on it already, so we're waiting for some windows and they'll put siding on and it'll look like a.
It's a nice lot.
Like a house again.
Yeah, it's a nice lot.
Yeah.
Is there damage to the garage back there too, or is it?
No, no, no. It has a new roof on it, like from two years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he did that, so.
Yeah, the garage is in pretty good shape.
Is it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Martin, do you have any questions? Do you have any more?
No, no comment.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Hingula, do you have any?
Just as a short.
Okay.
A building permit to re-roof a portion of the house was issued on 12/10/21.
Tell me that again, please.
According to the information we have here, a building permit to re-roof a portion of the house.
I don't know where the portion came from. We did the whole thing.
We did the whole.
Those were just the notes that were in on the building permit, so.
Sure, no, that's fine.
It's not uncommon for an older house to maybe not need a complete roof replacement. So, yeah, I'm not sure how those notes got denoted that way.
But you did.
It was 20 some squares, yeah, so they covered the whole thing, yeah, stripped it off, you know.
That's the only question.
It wasn't partial, the whole thing is done.
Okay, do you have anything? Okay, so.
So just to kind of go over the options, there are three options for a motion on this. The first would be to remove the property from the list for potential demolition. The second would be a motion to grant another extension. In that case, it would come back for review by the city commission. And then the third would be to take no action. Taking no action, since this has already been basically deemed eligible for demolition by the city commission, taking no further action would then allow the staff to move forward with steps to demolish it.
About how long you expect it is to take to finish it up, Mr. List?
Oh, probably six months. It's winter.
Well, that's completely, that's complete though.
Can we make you have the survey?
That's complete, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the survey guy, I talked to him, maybe, whenever, when we first bought it, the same day we bought it, I talked to him, so how long has that been? Six weeks.
Okay, so a couple of date options. The, the closest meeting after 30 days would be February 22nd, and then the next meeting after 60 days would be March 22nd. So if you wanted to do an extension, I would suggest one of those two dates that we could bring it back and see if that survey's been completed.
Yeah, our hands are kind of tied, you know.
Yeah, with, with getting that done. And again, an application to vacate right-of-way is something that will come to the city commission. So once that's made, it'll come to you all regardless of what you do with the demolition.
When that application is turned in, I mean, how long does it take to get to us?
Carrie, those go through the city clerk's office. Is it usually fairly scheduled fairly quickly?
Fairly quickly, yeah, once we go through public hearings.
We have to schedule a public hearing as well on the vacation of right-of-way.
Okay.
So you'll pass a resolution scheduling a public hearing and then it will be a public hearing, so there's a little bit of administrative time there for notices and have to go out.
So is it still possible though, the February date could be an option? Did it keep things rolling?
Yeah, I mean, if it got turned in within the next week or so, that would be potential. And it sounds like with needing to schedule the public hearings, that March, the March 22nd meeting might be a little more realistic.
You do remember, there are two different things.
Yes, yes.
Remember, these are, these are, these are different actions. You know, this is, this property has been deemed already to be eligible for demolition because of the condition of the property. You know, the vacation of right-of-way is a separate legislative action that may or may not pass, you know, depending on, on how you vote and depending on whether there are interests of other neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, so the two don't have to be tied together.
No, right, right. That's why they, yeah, weren't together tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're separate. Okay, any other questions?
I would support 60 days.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would do the same on the same, yeah.
So do you have a motion for what, March 22nd?
I do a motion for March 22nd.
Second, you have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion approved.
60 days.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. List.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is consider amendments and updates for city fee schedule.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, from time to time, city staff brings updates to the city's fee schedule, which is adopted by the city commission for either increases, for administrative changes, for changes, sometimes requests from outside agencies. And we have a little bit of both and all three tonight. So there are three items suggested for changing the fee schedule. The first one is actually not related to the fee itself, but just to the language. For the garage sale permit, the ordinance does indicate up to three consecutive days. That, that limits somebody not having a week-long rummage sale. It is included in the code of ordinances for 2019, but it was not put into the fee schedule. So we would recommend that the first change, garage sales per sale up to three consecutive days, that language be added, no change in the fee for that. The second one, I'm going to skip down to the third one on your list, is we didn't have a fee for two actions that we take related to the planning and the community development office. Those were the lot split application fee and the lot combination application fee. Those are common through development, the development world. We have fees for most of our development processes that go through the planning and community development department. Those two, we simply did not. And the, the amounts suggested there fall in line with the fees that we have for the zoning and subdivision regulations in other areas of the city. And then finally, an increase was requested to us by the River City Community Players for, related to ticket prices at the Performing Arts Center. We do have the RCCP president, Ron Mazia, here, and I would invite him to come up and explain a little bit about why they believe that an increase in fees which supports their operations was necessary. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Mazia.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
My name's Ron Mazia. I'm actually a member, I live in Lansing, Kansas, but River City Community Players is a block and a half just south of here. I started working with the theater 14 years ago and I was working with the reading committees and ran into what the costs were to bring musical and non-musical shows to the theater. At that time, a non-musical show was $75 per performance. They ran seven shows in each time they rented a non-musical. It was about $500 and change to get that done. 75 times seven, do the math, I don't do it too well in public, is about $525. About $10 per book, script book that we had to purchase, if you have a seven-member cast, that's $70, so you're up to $600. That same cost right now, having just looked at it for nine, for the 2023 season, what we just went in for authorization to get, is $140 for a non-musical. We reduced the number of shows from the non-musical that we were doing from seven to six, but it's still six, you know, $840, which is an increase of almost $300. The cost of the books have gone up to $15 a copy. Now, we buy those, the books are purchased and they go to the actors and they use them, they mark them up, and they don't get turned back in. Our musical shows, those costs have pretty much stayed the same. They're between $2,500 to $3,500 per musical for the run of the show. The books and materials we get from them are leased, are rented, and that all has to be turned back in. They have to be, all the marks he put in have to be erased. Commissioner Hingula has been on our stage, he knows how, he has to go back and erase all the marks that he's made in the book, or he pays, or he pays, or he pays $50 to keep the book. And we have some people that have left them on airplanes and they forfeit a $50 deposit that they give us to let that airplane take the, the book and go elsewhere. So what we've done is we have a whole series of tickets sales. We have patron ticket sales, people that come in, buy tickets for the whole season and they go from, it's in your fees book, start at $45 for a single ticket. You get one ticket to each of the four patron shows that we put on. That's one ticket. And it goes up, double ticket is $90, that's two tickets per show, and it keeps going up. You go from two, four, six, eight, and 10 tickets for the platinum ticket, which is, what we're requesting is $450 if it goes up to that. But more importantly is the ticket cost that comes in, just people just walking in off the street wanting to buy a ticket. That's been $12. Or 12, yeah, $12 for an adult, and we're looking to take that up to $15. I've done some surveys around the area. Theater in the park, which has two venues, one's an outdoor venue, which is $8 and, $8 a ticket. You're sitting outside, bugs get at you. When they go inside, which they have indoor theater also, it's $16.50 per ticket. The Barn Players, which is down in Kansas City, it's $20 per ticket. The Coterie is $18 per ticket. The Unicorn Theater, which is another downtown Kansas City, is $44 a ticket. Up in Atchison, we have the Theater Atchison Players, they're $18 per ticket. So we've been clearly one of the lower tickets. Even some of our local high schools run when they have their shows, their tickets are $12, $15 a copy. So we've requested to try to help reduce the cost that comes out of the city, because the city has committed to funding the theater down here. We tried to use our cost of what we pull in, turn over to, to the city, to reduce the cost where you're not paying for the shows. We do a youth show in, at Christmas time, we brought in $2,500. We have, there were no royalties paid out for that. We opened up to Deanna Shroyer School of Dance, two performances one day, another $2,500 came in. There were no costs to us other than turning the lights on.
Right.
So that, those are things that go back into the city coffers to help offset some of the costs of that old building we've been in for 45 years, which is on the historical registry, so you can't really do anything else with it, it's got to be maintained. So this is the, the cost what we've had, we took this to the Parks and Rec Commission, the board there, they announced, they approved the request to come to y'all.
Okay.
And we pressed you because favorably considered the increase.
And the prices, like you said, they haven't been increased since 2013-ish?
Well, I was the president when it was, it came, we went up and that was 10 years ago.
Okay.
It started the year I took over and then we haven't increased since then, but the price of costs have gone up.
Oh, sure, yeah, with everything, yeah.
And they really jumped. They jumped from about $90 pre-COVID to the 140 that's coming out of COVID. And I couldn't, I couldn't believe it when I saw that.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mazia, definitely, I don't have any problem with the price increase. I think over 10 years, you know, a lot of industries, 22, about average 22, 20% looks like across the board here. I mean, that's perfectly reasonable to me, it seems like. I would actually just like to know though, and I know you probably weren't prepared for this, can you maybe just give us a quick rundown on what attendance has looked like? I know 2020 was weird and quirky, but just have you guys grown in attendance over the last five years? What does that look like for you?
Well, going up to, you just got to remove the last two years.
Yeah, right, right.
We are one of the few theaters that are back operational. Commissioner Hingula has been to every one of our shows this past year. Commissioner Wilson, his son was in, his son was in one of our shows.
Denzil Washington.
It depends on the show. The youth shows, we pack that place in. Show like Harvey did fairly well, another show which has no recognition, no one knows anything about it. I've seen more people on the, on the stage than were in the audience. I hate to say that, but that's, that's true. Some of them, they start off low, then they pick up the, towards the end. We are, when we send our request in, we, we put, our capacity is 200, 280, 80 people. That's a, that's a full house.
Sure.
Right now, we've limited it to 140 people. Part of that was due to COVID restrictions because we took every other row out and then we seated in between. Like if you came in with five people, there'd be three seats between you and the next person. So you'd have one through five, six, seven, and eight were gone, nine and 10, so you'd have seven people in that row. You can have a minimum of four people, I could have the whole row filled with a whole family of 10.
Do you, do you know, just even for last year, what's your rough attendance was for the, for the year?
About 560 people.
Okay.
For the four, for the, uh, six shows, for the, uh, seven shows, there's a musical, about 560 people.
Okay, okay.
And what is it normally, without COVID?
We've had so, shows that gone up to 180 to 240 people. It just depends on the show. Annie is going to pack out.
Oh, yeah, the musicals.
Musical, this is a musical town.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hingula can probably attest to that. You put on Harvey, which Jimmy Stewart with the butt-talking rabbit, you know, big rabbit?
Yeah.
I think we had 125 people, the mess, the best we had at one night was 125 people. Another one we did was Foreigner. Englishman comes in, he doesn't speak, he feels like they think he's, he can't talk, he's from a foreign country, and they kind of talk real weird to him, like, this is a fork, and trying to, you know, like talk louder, it makes, I can, you can understand me in a foreign language. And we had averaged about 80 people per night on that show. But other shows, I've seen some where I thought, oh, this is going to be a pretty good show, and it just depends on the weather, what's happening.
Right.
We go up against the Chiefs in a, in a Super Bowl game. We go up against the Chiefs in a, in a Super Bowl game.
I know a couple of years ago, before COVID, that I would help usher, and yeah, I did notice that the musical seemed just more.
Musicals, musicals is a musical town.
They are. Okay, did you have any more questions?
No.
No, okay, no, thank you, sir.
And were there any questions on the other two items?
No, I didn't have any.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer, real quick, on the, the lot split application, lot combination application fee. So something like this, you know, I know we're looking at, per the notes right here, five lot splits or combinations were processed last year. So we're looking at anywhere from seven hundred and fifty dollars to fifteen hundred dollars in additional revenue to the city. I've, I've been one that I'm, I'm not a proponent of, you know, adding more fees to our fee schedule right now anyway, and really want us to continue to look at ways to bring some top-line growth into the city when it comes to supplementing anything. So, you know, I know you guys have all gone through, you know, department exercises before to take costs out and look at ways to maybe improve upon things that you've done for, you know, a number of years. That's kind of where I'm at with, with something like this, and, and I think the less we can, you know, add some more burden to some of our folks here in town, you know, that's, that's kind of how I'm leaning on that when it comes to additional fees. So those are my thoughts on that. I don't know if you got any.
So there's, there's different, there's different rationale for fees. Sometimes fees, most of the time, city fees are not designed as revenue generators, especially something like this, five, five in a year, something else, alarm permit fee or something like that. What, what fees do in a more general sense is, they sort of make sure that the person approaching the city for a project takes it seriously and has to get in the game. If you have somebody who just is coming in, and staff is going to then dedicate that much time to working on that project, but there's nothing that they have to come in, we've found that they don't come in with as prepared, as serious, you may not see them again. And so a lot of times, the fees are to set up some sort of level of two parties having skin in the game together. They are not designed to be onerous or to, again, drive revenue. Most of the time with the development fee, it would be something like that. We get a lot of, that would come in and would ask a bunch of questions, and then, and then we wouldn't hear them, and we go back and forth. We found that with a fee, most cities have, that sometimes it, it sort of weeds out those who may not be as serious with the project.
Do, do we know of, of these, the lot splits that were taken care of and processed last year? I mean, all those went through without any problem, I mean, folks were serious.
One or two of what those were.
I can't think of.
I'm sorry, I know that's like.
No, that's fine. So lot splits and lot combinations are really designed to be more simple type things, and it, it's already set up to make it a streamlined process for property owners. So instead of having to go through a full plat process where that would have to go to the Planning Commission and potentially the City Commission, and you're looking at, you know, that can be up to, you know, two, three months depending on, you know, if public hearings are involved, that type of thing. This is something, if someone has a larger piece of land, they're wanting to split it in half so they can sell part of it, this is something that we feel comfortable reviewing at a staff level. They have to have it surveyed, it still has to, they have to go through that process themselves, but this is really already meant to streamline it for them so they can get through that quicker without having to come to the Planning Commission, City Commission. The, I would say the ninety percent of the ones we see are for residential lots. These are typically not commercial lots where they're for business or commercial development. It's for residential, it's usually more of the large lots that we're seeing that they want to split off, or if somebody has a lot, say up here in the north part of town, they have a lot, and there's a few of those like skinny vacant lots next to them, and they purchase that, and they want to combine that with theirs, it would, again, still have to be surveyed, but that lets them come through that process, just administrative review, without going to the Planning Commission for that.
Can I?
I have a little bit just from the legal side, if I may. I mean, Paul is exactly right. Fees are distinguished by taxes under Kansas law, in that fees are not intended or to be as revenue generators. What they're intended to do is to establish fees that are to approximate the cost to the city of handling, handling.
Offset and everything, yeah.
The, the alternative thought being is that, well, otherwise, it's the regular community through taxpayer dollars that are subsidizing, because staff salaries and wages all stay the same and such, so. But you are, you are correct that, and Paul is correct, that fees by law are generally, are required to generally be estimates of the amount of staff time. Often, I would say they are usually much lower than the amount of time that staff actually depends on things, but that is an aspect of Kansas law.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Waters. Can I ask you one kind of tough question? Do you have any, maybe rough estimate on, for the amount of residential splits that have been done over the last few years? How many of those have turned into new properties, going up, new roofs going up, you know, homes being built? I know, I know.
I don't, I, I would really hesitate to give an answer to that.
But we've seen, we've seen that happen pretty consistently, though.
Yeah, with, with the ones that come in, I think it says in there, there were like five lot splits that we did last year. Those are typically something that, it may not be immediate, but several years down the road, you're likely to see a house that's going to go up.
Okay.
I, I just, well, one of the things that I've seen over the last few years mostly is, the North Leavenworth has the smaller lots, which are really not buildable, and you have, if you tear down an, an old house, and a, a lot of times, the city has given the property to the, the property owner and then made that split, isn't that correct? How we've done that?
So normally, if, if we tear it down and somebody buys it, they'll want to combine a lot, but it wouldn't be from land that the city has given them. We, we've sold them properties that we had prior, acquired in a previous tax sale, and we had a couple of those just recently, if somebody came to the tax sale, but then they have to come to us and record that, go through the lot combination process.
Okay.
But normally, those in North Leavenworth would be to expand the size of the property for a maintenance type issue.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, I, sorry, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner.
Okay, I was just gonna say, and I appreciate the feedback for sure. Still, you know, definitely leaning on the side of not adding those additional fees in right now. We are, have a pretty good track record of seeing folks come through, and I get you want to keep people serious, but, you know, new houses are going up as well, and, you know, the city is benefiting from that, you know, that, that's kind of where I'm at on that, so.
I'd like to jump right on that one. Is it possible to make it a, or a refundable or partially refundable fee? So that, you know, one, yeah, you, you make them put their skin in the, in the game, right? But at the same time, we're not adding fees on top of what they're trying to do.
So I, I would, I would not want to do any kind of refund. It's almost impossible to track, and then the refunding process with your revenues and your expenditures, I would rather go smaller or not have a fee than try to track that over time.
But the fees associated with services from the city staff, correct?
Yeah, and I think, and this was a very good point, then you, this is just one, but there are a, there are a number of common development fees, and you get into the idea of then work done on a specific commercial enterprise, the rest of the taxpaying public subsidizing that, and them not then entering it, because again, these are only two of a lot of different type of rezoning, or variance, or survey, or any type of these processes that we go through with an individual property owner.
So if we weren't charging anything for these two before, then why is it coming up now?
Because it is aligned with other ones that we have that we just hadn't included in the schedule of fees.
And see, just to, to that, Commissioner Brader, I feel like since it hasn't been in there, we've, we've already established a baseline of where, you know, our operating, you know, budget is and everything like that. It's kind of, kind of built into what we do. There's a potential good benefit not only for our residents to, you know, do something like this. But I think it's, it's, anytime we can lessen that burden, and even though we may still have a bunch of, you know, I've seen some of them, you know, a bunch of fees still in place, I think it shows some good faith on our part as a city to say, hey, look, we still want to partner with you, you know, as a resident, and, you know, you know, help, help out where we can to, to help them, you know, further a deal we're working on, so it's.
Certainly a discretion of the commission.
Question, so are you in favor of reducing the fee, the cost, or just completely removing it?
I am in favor of not adding it. So since right now, we don't have that fee in, Commissioner Wilson, I'm, I'm not in favor of adding it in right now.
Okay, I have a question. So in two thousand twenty-one, a total of five lot splits or combinations were processed. So, and I don't think anyone's asked this, what do we have the couple of years before? Is that common to have maybe five?
Yeah, it's roughly around there every year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so then I just need a motion of some type.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the amendments to the fee schedule as presented to be effective January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second it. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, next up, consider, let's see, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider shared facility usage agreement with the University of St. Mary.
We have Steve Grant, Parks and Recreation for this item.
Hi.
Thank you, Paul. Madam Mayor, Commissioner, good evening, great to be here with you tonight. The issue is to consider and finalize an agreement with the University of St. Mary's to share facilities. Last October, Rob Miller, the Athletic Director of the University of St. Mary's, approached our department inquiring about the usage of the city-owned tennis courts at David Brewer Park. And, and the reason for that is they're starting a tennis program at the university. So as, as our staff talked about it and, and the tennis courts, we also talked about the challenges we face with, with some of our need for facilities, and more specifically for our youth basketball programs to play games at. So our recreation program supervisor, Tabor Madilla, and myself, we got to talking about it and said, how about, how about we discuss with them the possibility of, of sharing the facilities where they utilize the tennis courts, city-owned tennis courts at, at David Brewer, and we're able to utilize some basketball courts that they have, and specifically ended up in the McGillie Center out on campus out there.
Yeah, it's very nice.
We presented that back to St. Mary's to get their feedback on it. They liked the idea, they saw it as a win-win, whereas no cost to them, and as long as we could figure out a way to make it work with both entities. So with that, Mr. Waters drew up an agreement for, for consideration, along with staff input. We presented that to the University of St. Mary. They, they reviewed it, we went back and forth a few times, just mainly semantics, dates, when we would be utilizing theirs, when they would be utilizing ours, that kind of thing. But they were definitely in favor of it. They brought it back to us with favorable remarks. So from there, it is a little bit about the contract itself, it's a two-year contract, and, and this initial one, and what it will cover is, it'll be, it'll be for us using the McGillie Center for our youth basketball programs for both this year as well as next year in two thousand twenty-three. And, and in turn, they will have dedicated time at David Brewer Tennis Courts. Their tennis program is, is set to start this fall, so it will start in, in September, and they will utilize it, and the dates are outlined, and they'll utilize it this fall, and then again, next spring in two thousand twenty-three. That's when the, that's when this initial contract would, would end, and then if it's working out for both parties, we would go back to discussions about, about extending it. So with that, with their agreement, we, we went ahead and took it to the Parks and Community Activities Advisory Board. They, they liked what they heard, said it sounds like a win-win, and they've also, they've also recommended it, they voted unanimously to recommend it to, to the City Commission tonight. Did you have a question, Madam Mayor?
Coach Mathis supports it, then I guess it's probably all right.
Yes, and, and he had, of course, Coach had some, you know, not reservations, just discussions of, okay, how, how are we going to work it?
I think it looks fine, three to six P.M., they're going to be able to get out.
Correct, correct, and we will post that out onsite so that regulars know. Rob, Rob Miller, the Athletic Director, he's very in tune with our department. He used to be on our park board for several years till a couple of years ago. He's indicated that very rarely, if at all, will they ever be utilizing all six courts, just because it's, it's a three-hour, it's a three-hour practice, and not all students will be practicing for the entire three hours, they shift around, you know, so that they get individual coaching and things like that, so.
Now, Mr. Grant, are you gonna, when the University of St. Mary, when they do their tennis program, will there be some kind of signage or notification for other people that want to use the tennis courts, or at least, you know, say, hey, this is reserved?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We will post it out there at David Brewer, and we'll also, we'll also have it on our city website, on our, on our Parks and Rec page, but we'll post it out there on, at the site.
At least to give people a heads up.
Yes, ma'am, yes, shows the schedule of when, when they'll be out there so that, you know, people will know. The regulars will know right away how to adjust accordingly, and then, and then, like I said, if there are walk-ups, it is a public park, if there are walk-ups, Mr. Miller has indicated that it would be very uncommon for all six courts to be completely, completely used, and they'd be accommodating for people walking up. And then we still have the tennis courts over at, the public tennis courts over at Cody Park also, yes. Staff sees it as a win-win, you know, there's no, no budgetary concerns with it. It, it really helps out our youth basketball program. We struggle for places to play games. A couple of the schools that we utilize in town are great for practice, they don't, they don't really have a lot of space for parents to come watch. McGillie Center has a balcony that sets up perfectly for.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah, so, so we're really excited about it, and, and our numbers, we just started our youth basketball program, just started this past weekend, our numbers are strong, and it's going well.
They're gonna, they're gonna continue to grow with that going on now, you know, that, that new agreement, so.
Oh, yeah. They have room to grow, room to grow.
Absolutely, so, so obviously, staff fully recommends the, the finalization of this agreement, and we've already got the signature from, from Sister Diane, and, and I think she even mentioned it to the City Commission last time she addressed everybody, so. So I think both entities are, are excited, I know they're excited about starting their new tennis program, too.
Yes. Okay, any other questions?
No, I just want to say, man, it's definitely a win-win. The city has already benefited from it. With the youth program last week, my son got a chance to experience his first basketball game, and the parents just loved the space that was available, and so it was definitely a win on the city behalf, and I know St. Mary will definitely benefit from the tennis courts as well.
Yeah, I think it's great that they want to partner with us and, and things like this, because it really helps us all.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Grant, so I just needed a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for the partnership with the University of St. Mary.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consider sole source purchase of ultraviolet lamps from Ray Lindsay Company. Seems like we talk about ultraviolet lamps a lot.
We talk about them a lot, we haven't purchased them. So that's what we're here to, to actually do tonight. So we have our public parks director, Brian Faust, Tim Guardado, wastewater superintendent, and John Limpke, the assistant superintendent.
Thanks for coming, guys, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider a sole source purchase of four hundred and eighty low-pressure, high-volume UV lamps and associated parts off of Channel One of our wastewater treatment plants. For a little bit of background, the final treatment step at our wastewater plant is the disinfection process. Disinfection is required to reduce and destroy the bacteria, virus, and protozoa populations in the wastewater before it's discharged to the river. This disinfection is critical to the protection of public health and the environment. One key advantage to UV and disinfection is its ability to inactivate Cryptosporidium and Giardia. When bacteria and viruses are exposed to UV light, they are instantaneously rendered incapable of reproducing and infecting. Without treatment or with faulty equipment, the release of these harmful microorganisms increases the potential of contamination in communities that rely on the river for both their drinking water and for recreational use. Our ultraviolet disinfection system was installed in two thousand twelve. New lamp warranties are for twelve thousand hours, or thirty-six months. The current lamps were replaced in two thousand sixteen and have approximately twelve thousand hours on them now. Um, in an effort to reduce the frequency of lamp replacement, the city has modified our processes to have a steadier flow to the UV system. This results in less on and off cycles of the lamps, meaning fewer chances for lamps and ballasts to burn out. Staff has also worked with the Ray Lindsay Company to reprogram our lighting controller. This adjustment, um, this adjusted the number and intensity of the lamps that are on at any one time, further reducing the hours on the lamps and extending their operational life. These efforts have bought additional years for each channel. Uh, staff did look at cooperative pricing uh through the Mid-America Regional Council to see if someone else uh was had an agreement with Ray Lindsay or a firm to purchase UV lights so we could maybe get a discount. Uh, we were unable to find a contract that someone else used. Uh, staff did independently look at third-party uh suppliers of the same lamps. At this time, staff does recommend staying with Ray Lindsay based on the warranty of the lights, the system and past performance of the company. Staff will continue to review third-party suppliers moving forward. With that, uh, staff does recommend that the city commission approve the sole source, sole source purchase of lamps and associated parts and supply from the Ray Lindsay Company for a total of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents. And Tim or John, and John are here tonight to answer. Any questions you may have?
Okay, I have a question, uh, Mr. Faust. Um, so is this company, like you said, the only one out there that is making these type of ultraviolet lights? I mean, you, I know you said you couldn't find a third-party supplier.
I think there are third-party suppliers. Ray Lindsay is the dealer.
The distributor for this.
Oh, distributor, okay. So just at this time, you couldn't find just any other, or you?
Wait, there is other third parties, but they don't have the guarantee that comes with Ray Lindsay for using.
That type, okay, okay, the warranty on it type thing, okay. Is there quite a few other plants that use this method, ultraviolet? Or is this the only method that's used?
No, but there's other different companies. I don't know, I'm not for sure how many use.
This type? I was, I was just curious myself.
There there are a lot of plants that use UV disinfection. But this particular system is is something that we don't know, how many other companies.
Right, in general. Okay, uh, I don't have any other questions to.
Yeah, just one, um, on your your request for sole source, it says, uh, where is it? To keep a guarantee we we have, we with Ray Lindsay, we we have to use their product. Uh, earlier here in the recommendation says water, water treatment facility, uh, water processing facility, city staff will remove and replace the lamps. Is that going to affect the the guarantee?
No, no.
Okay, so it's not on the installation, the the guarantee is just on the product?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Faust and guys. Um, do you have any ballpark on what that system costs? I mean, I'm sure it's out of this world when you first put it in, the ultraviolet, because it is very unique. It's it's and Trojan's gonna protect their local, you know, dealer here in the area. So we're we're kind of stuck on some of the pricing. How much?
Twelve million.
And have we seen, can you tell me, do you recall the last several years in the screen? I don't know if you recall or not what the price increases have looked like on these lamps over the last several years.
So the last time we purchased them, and I believe two thousand eighteen, it was almost half of what we're paying now, but we were getting a special rate for like the first.
For so long, as part of spending twelve million dollars with this, right? Yeah.
After that, it was raised, but I think the last time we bought lamps was two thousand eighteen. So since then, it's almost doubled.
Okay, okay.
Well, you know, the special price we had has gone away.
And when they came in to help you guys reprogram, uh, was that because you all initiated that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we were trying to find ways to save.
But they've not been very proactive on coming into, hey, we can drive some more cost savings for you guys.
Yeah, if we call them, they'll come down. I mean, they have no problems coming down, but they don't necessarily come down. They want to.
That's what I was asking, yep, yep, okay, okay. Appreciate that. Thanks for the info.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, um, no further comments or questions, just need a motion.
I move that uh to approve the sole source purchase of four hundred, four hundred and eighty UV lamps with the associated parts and supplies from Ray Lindsay Company for a cost not to exceed hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now we are at the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I uh move to approve the claims for December eleventh, twenty twenty-one through January seventh, twenty twenty-two in the amount of three million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Net amount for payroll number twenty-five, effective December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Includes police and fire pension in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents. And payroll number twenty-six, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two and forty-two cents. No police and fire pension.
Sound like an auctioneer. I second it.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
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 Okay, well, that's the end of our meeting, but I'll go around if there's um, what, any comment from Mr. Kramer?
One piece of uh cool information, I think, that our Parks and Recreation Director shared with me today. A couple of years ago, the city commission uh tasked staff with putting more stuff, if not everything, online, registrations, fee payments and such. And one of the um things that we've done is add a service called Eventbrite. In Eventbrite, you are able to sign up for classes, rent park shelters, um sign up for uh sports leagues, buy performing arts center tickets. And we just got our twenty twenty-one um report. And over nine thousand events, uh shelter reservations, uh youth participation were done through Eventbrite.
Last year?
Uh, yep, last year. Um, we had uh one thousand eight hundred and twenty people um who used the service more than once, whether that's multiple shelter reservations or aquasize classes or PAC classes. And we had twen- and I think this is, this is important. Um, uh, it's important to publicize your your new options. We had two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine um brand-new attendees to the, to using the service. I think it was our third year using it, so it continues to get the word out and uh it's a way that we're able to get more people easier into our programs. So I thought that was interesting, interesting information that they provided to us, so that's all I have, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Hengula, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Oh, go on.
Have a great rest of the week, everybody.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, right?
I just have, I just have one thing. Um, this past week, uh, we've seen the COVID numbers shoot up from three hundred to over nine hundred um just in one week. And uh those are the ones that have been tested. So in a majority of those, well, all of those that are hospitalized right now are unvaccinated. Majority of those that are, that are, um, they had so many, they couldn't, they had so many this week, they couldn't figure out who was unvaccinated, who was vaccinated. But in the past several weeks, as I followed it, um, it's been about eighty to ninety percent of those that are hospitalized um in deaths in the, in in the Kansas City area anyway, that have been unvaccinated. So um, just, just to the public, just get out there and get the vaccine, you know? It's like, honestly, let's just, let's just try to get rid of this. Our, our health system is just overwhelmed right now. I I know somebody that fell and broke her pelvis and it took five days to get an MRI and then another five days to get the results. Just because everything is just so backed up. I uh I have somebody who's, who's thirty-year-old niece is in the hospital, had to sit out in the hallway for several hours before she could get in and get seen. It's just, um, I don't know, if you haven't worked, I worked in the health field for thirty years, so I know a lot of people that work in it. And if you walk into an emergency room in in the greater Kansas City area, you're gonna see a mess. And it's, that's what we're in right now, is a mess. So I'm just putting that out there, please, uh, think about your neighbors and think about yourself.
Hey, Commissioner Browder, just if I could say one more thing. You know, definitely, I think it's, it's terrible what's been going on uh across the country. I think we're at some really interesting times right now for sure when it comes to uh COVID. Uh, but, you know, definitely want to remind everybody too, you know, it is, you know, we have freedom in this country and your healthcare choices are still your choices. Uh, I know the CDC came out recently and um said that a lot of the numbers had been, you know, incidentally misreported, over seventy-five percent of people that have been vaccinated um that have died in hospitals, um, well, they they had been vaccinated. And that just came out a few days ago. So I just, it would encourage anybody that's struggling, it has any family members too that are down with COVID. I think we all know somebody that's had it, uh, or we've been through it ourselves, that just become informed, do your research, find out what you want to do for your family and just sign that, that's all I'd say.
Okay, okay, um, I have something I'd like to say before we end the meeting. Uh, on a lighter note, um, I didn't say it while you were up there, but uh I did. Um, as mayor of two thousand twenty-one, uh, Nancy, I just want to thank you for your service, your leadership and your professionalism. And I have enjoyed working with you and will continue for the next couple of years, so uh that's all I had to say. So um, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, begin voting.
Aye.
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 You gotta vote, yeah?
I was like, eh?